Okay, well, I guess we've got everything figured out, at least so far. Good evening and welcome to this evening's candidate forum. I am Gina Coppins, Chair of the Belgrade Communications Committee. And we really appreciate everybody for coming to the forum, both the audience and participants. It's a good way for us to not only know the candidates better, but also learn what is important to the Belgrade residents. This evening, we have two separate candidate forums. The first forum will feature candidates who are running to fill two seats on the select board. Joining us are Nicholas Alexander and Melanie Jewell. Ricky Dameron is also running for select board, but has declined to participate in the forum. At 6:45, we will have the forum for candidates for the RSU 18 school board. Five candidates are running to fill one seat. They are Stacy Dowling, Sharon Frost, Penny Morrell, James Smith, and Brian Wedge. The candidates have been given questions ahead of time that they may be asked during the forum. If you'd like to ask the candidates questions, you can post them either in the chat feature on Zoom or on the town Facebook page. The forum is also being streamed live on the town's Facebook page. And a recording of the forum will be available on the town of Belgrade's Facebook page and the town's YouTube channel after the forum. Jay Bradshaw is our moderator, and now I will turn it over to Jay.
Hey, thanks, Gina. What I'd like to do is to ask for the people who are not running for select person, if you could turn your cameras off. We would appreciate that. That way, for the simulcast, it clears up the screen for others. And Stacy, if you could turn your camera off as well, that would be wonderful.
How do I do that?
And what we'll do is we'll certainly welcome at 6:45, when we start the school board panel, we'll welcome that group to come back in. We do this just because it helps keep the screens a little bit cleaner. And so for the simulcast and the recording, it'll make it a little bit more pleasant. So the only ground rules are that this really isn't a debate. This is a meet the candidates forum. Those of you who have been through this before know that the goal of this evening is to have a conversation with the candidates. There are some questions that have been prepared. There may be others that are asked just as a follow-up, but it's not a debate. It's just to have a neighborly conversation so that we can get to know the people who are running for office. And Gina, I'm gonna ask Gina, Brian, you'll be able to keep track of the waiting room and things like that, right? So only because I see Melanie closest on my screen, let me just start there. And Melanie, just tell us a little bit about yourself, what we talked about, just a couple of minutes as an introduction. Let us know who you are and why you're interested in running for the board of select persons.
All right, so I'm Melanie Jewell. Some of you folks may know me, some of you may not. I first joined the select board in 2005 as a write-in candidate. And I've continued on the board for the next nine years. I took a five-year hiatus, and after that time, I realized how much I had missed being in a position to help Belgrade and its citizens. So I ran again for the select board. And in 2019, I rejoined the board, and for the last two years, I've served as the board chair. I'm running for another three-year term because I love this community and will always strive to help Belgrade be the best that it can be. I leave my personal opinions and my political beliefs at the door. And I work with the board as a team to move Belgrade forward while still being cognizant of the rich history upon which this town is built and staying true to what makes us unique and welcoming. I believe that every member of our boards and committees brings a different set of skills and life lessons to the table. It's been my pleasure learning from others over these years and incorporating these into my own skill set. My hope is that I get to continue this journey for another term, and I would appreciate your support.
Nicholas, welcome. Please tell us a bit about yourself and why you're interested in running for the select board.
Okay, thanks, Jay. My name is Nicholas Alexander. I'm running for select because I believe having useful involvement is key. We are the next, my generation is the next generation. We are the ones that are gonna be taking over when this generation can. So I believe we need to learn from this generation for the prior generation before we take over.
Well, thank you. As one of those old guys, Nicholas, I appreciate younger people stepping forward and being willing to get involved. Nick, let me stay with you for just a minute. What are your top issues, concerns, or goals that you think the select board and the town should be addressing?
Thanks for that question, Jay. So my goals are simple. One goal I have is to potentially create a teen center in addition to the Center for All Seasons to create economic development for the town. In addition to allowing helping seniors stay in their lifelong homes. And yeah, just helping them stay in their lifelong homes and trying to stay out of nursing homes.
Tell us more about the teen center concept. That's interesting. Ideas as to where it might be and how it might operate?
Well, I have thought about where it might be, but I haven't thought about any operational things yet. But my thought was to have it where the Hannaford supermarket was supposed to be across from the Belgrade Central School. But Hammond Lumber owns that building, so I wonder if we could purchase that building other town or not. But that was one of my thoughts.
Is that the old, it was an envelope or printing business at one point?
Yeah.
Interesting.
Didn't they used to build school furnishings too, like shelving and things like that for for school systems and hospitals, I believe, was their last manufacturing thing there?
Interesting. I don't know what it's been used for later. I remember, I think Jon Stewart built that as a part of his printing business once upon a time, a long time ago. So Melanie, same question for you. You know, what issues, what services do you think that the, all right, let me back up. What are the top issues that you think the school, the select board and the town should be addressing?
Well, I mean, I think having done this for the last 12 years, the last thing I do is bring an agenda to the table because that gets thrown right out the window. But clearly, I mean, the issues that are facing Belgrade currently is this salt contamination of the wells in and around the triangle. So first identified in 2011, the town took steps along with Maine DOT to attempt to halt the spread of salt and to we drilled new wells and things like that, trying to get ahead of the situation. We thought that we had it under control. And then in 2018, when they were doing the construction on Route 8 and 11, they took some samples and realized that not only was the salt situation not under control, but it had actually migrated further. And one of the wells that we drilled that did have potable water had been recontaminated. So the new well was contaminated. So that is, of course, one of the biggest issues that Belgrade faces. We work really hard to try to keep the your mill rate as level as we can. And this is one of those situations where some of that can, you know, what it may cost us is out of our control. So but what we do have a responsibility to is to make the people whole who had potable water prior to the long-term storage of the sand and salt by the town of Belgrade and Maine DOT. So that's an issue that faces us. One of the other priorities that I think for Belgrade that I would love to see is, a lot of folks think of our recreation program as just for the kids. And when I think of our recreation program, I think toddlers through seniors. So I would love to see the programming with the senior resource group starting up and looking at doing a little bit more senior programming. What I would like to see is, you know, a lot more programming mixing up the age groups, you know, not strictly toddlers, not strictly seniors, not strictly age, you know, school age, but have some activities that incorporate across the generations. So I'm thinking snowshoeing, cross-country skiing, you know. Yeah, you know, so just things like that that can kind of pull people together.
Those programs would be an expansion of the Center for All Seasons, or were you envisioning someplace else where these might take place?
Well, I was sort of picturing, I mean, when we looked for donations for canoes and kayaks, we had LL Bean, an Old Town canoe and kayak stepped up and donated. I would love to see snowshoes available for folks to borrow and maybe center it at the Center for All Seasons, maybe have a secondary center someplace else in town where folks would get a chance to borrow snowshoes, try them out, see if it's something that they would be comfortable with, and then maybe decide to get them on their own. So but I think probably the best place to start would be with the Board of Parks and Recreation and see what they have for ideas for growing their programming. And if they think that works within their budget and what they have for time and what they have for available folks to help with those programs.
So I want to go back to the sand, the salt issue as well, just to make sure that for my benefit and for the folks who are listening, that the area that's affected by this is sort of that triangle right between Cemetery Road 27 and 8 and 11. Is that correct?
So yes, there is a little bit of migration down the Depot Road. And but that's mainly where it's contained at this point. You know, the geology of that area has, you know, allowed that salt to travel much the way we thought it would when you look at the geology. And it's, at this point, it's, the plume hasn't spread anymore, but it also hasn't been tested since last year. So what we're doing is with Maine DOT is regularly testing those area wells to see if the levels are stable or if they're increasing or decreasing.
Is it likely to go over to the Dyer Estates and the other development there that's changed names a couple of times, Pine Wood?
Well, there are, there's healthy wells in Pine Wood right now. So, you know, fingers crossed, and I'll cross my toes too. But as we get a handle on, I mean, we built the sand and salt shed and had, you know, tried to get everything undercover, thinking that that would halt the spread. But that amount of salt in the ground is just gonna keep moving until it's dissipated.
Clyde Bickford, when he was moderator at the town meeting, talking about how much it costs the town to we buy the sand and salt and we pay to buy it, we pay to store it, we pay to spread it, we pay to clean it up, and then we pay for the damage that it does as well. And that was, gosh, that was, you know, probably 30 years ago that I remember Clyde making that comment. So let me, along that theme, let me go back to Nicholas. So, you know, one of the proposals is to set up a public water system to address the issue. What are your thoughts on that? And are there other options that you think that should be considered?
Is that Nicholas or me?
Yeah, that's back to Nicholas, sorry. Muted. There we go.
Yes. Well, Jay, after talking to Anthony, it seems like multiple options were considered, and this was the best option. And it looks like this was the best option. So I think this is an overall good investment for the town, for the town.
That certainly is a biggie. So are there other services? So Nick, you mentioned the the teen center and the senior, the age at home program. Are there other services that you think the town should be considering adding? Or the flip side of that is, are there services that you think we should consider eliminating?
That's a tough question, Jay. So I would say with input from the select board that citizens make that decision with input from the select board. I don't, I can't think of any program that should be eliminated or program that could be added at the time.
Would you support raising taxes to pay for additional programs if there were some that were identified?
Yeah. I would not, I would not support that. I would, I would support tax offsets, but then again, I am not sure where we could offset those costs.
So I guess that goes back to, I think, one of the things that comes up at every candidate's forum is trying to differentiate between wants and needs. How do you go about doing that? What do you, what do you see as the the needs that we absolutely have to have to do and contrast that with some of the wants?
I think the most important need is emergency services. Because without emergency services, our town couldn't run. So I think one of the most important needs is emergency services.
Are there others?
Yes. The, the the, one of the most, that's the only thing I can think of at the moment.
So Melanie, I've heard you use that phrase many times, I think, as we've had these discussions. So tell me about your thought process and how do you, as a select person, go about making that distinction between the wants and the needs?
So it's hard. It is always hard because you're always gonna have citizens coming forward who have great ideas for Belgrade. And sometimes those great ideas come with a price tag that exceeds the comfort level of the town. So if you know, the bottom line of that is, you know, that the taxpayers, that is the legislative body for the town, and they have the final say. So one example of a citizen initiative was to provide some speed calming measures in Belgrade Lakes. Price tag for that is $5,000. So when you look at the whole scope of the budget and how much we need to raise, $5,000 sounds like a drop in the bucket. But need versus want. When you take a look at your warrant, you'll see that it was not overwhelmingly supported by the select board and the budget committee as a need. So it's more of a want and a wish. We did put the speed sign down in Belgrade Lakes and what folks were what they thought was happening is that a lot of folks were exceeding the speed limit by at least five miles per hour over and that folks were scared to come out of their driveway and things like that. When we put the speed sign down there, the reality was is that there are two times a day, 5:00 AM and like 11:00 at night, when people are actually exceeding the speed limit in the village. So that was one of those ways where we, we held off, we didn't make a decision right out of the gate to go ahead and purchase anything or follow up with those ideas until we did the study. And when you did the study, we realized that it's more of a want and not a need. So because of that, you know, the board decided not to act on it. We moved it forward to the taxpayers. So we approved a warrant article moving forward. But that $5,000 may not go through because it's not overwhelmingly supported.
So you mentioned the voters are the legislative body. How do you see the role of the select board fitting in with town government and with regard to the administration of the town itself?
So the select board is sort of the gatekeepers, where the purse tires and the person tires. So if the legislative body has given us authority to operate a budget within a certain amount of money, it is up to the select board to work with the departments to stay within that budget. So there's mechanisms in place to not exceed the budget. Over the years, we have tightened up some of our processes so that more more things go to the voters than may have gone previously. And there are a lot of times that you will hear in the select board where we'll say, you know, this is something that we feel strongly the voters should be deciding. So we sometimes decide not to act and move it forward to the legislative body if it's not a time pressing commitment. So I see the select board works with the town manager with the budget committee, works with all of your committees, Board of Parks and Transfer Station Committee. We are the overseers, but we are also the peacekeepers and the purse tighteners. So we all work together as a team. Everybody has a place and everybody, you know, works cohesively.
Nicholas, let me ask you the same question. How would you describe the role of the select board as it fits within town, town government structure?
I would have to agree with Melanie on that. It's been, yes, Melanie said it's a whole team. You just can't do it. One person just can't do the whole thing. So you have that communication. So I have, yeah, I agree with Melanie that you have to have a good communication strategy throughout all departments.
Well, one of the things that is gonna be hitting is there's gonna be about $340,000 that's gonna be coming to the town of Belgrade. The sum's already here, and the balance will be, will be arriving from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, as we casually refer to it. Staying with Nick for just a second here, what process do you think the town should use in deciding how to use that one-time funding?
After talking with Anthony, I think, and after talking with Anthony, there are many limited and many uses, but it's very limited. So I would, I would propose something like the governor did in her State of the State address to give part back to the citizens for what they endured through the pandemic.
Well, that's intriguing. So say more about that in the form of, actually, the governor's talking about sending a check out to people. Along those lines for the Belgrade taxpayers as well? And how would you, how would you do that?
I'm not 100% sure how we would do something like that on a town level, but yes, that is something I am in favor of.
Interesting. Melanie, what are your thoughts? $350,000 is a lot of money, but it's one-time money, and there are some strings attached to it. What are your thoughts on the process and the priorities?
Well, what we've decided to do in the town of Belgrade is not make a quick decision. We've had a lot of folks come at us with ideas. Of course, one of the first ones is to give a bonus back to all the town employees who worked through the pandemic. And the flip side of that is, is that it's not just the town employees' pot of money. It belongs to all of the taxpayers, and it's, it's not a handout. It's a, it's a handback essentially. So what we are hoping to do is we're gonna have a public forum. And, you know, we want folks to come to us with what their ideas are. There are some limitations on what we can use the money for. One of the questions that we had for the state was whether or not we could utilize some of that funding if the voters approve the creation of a public water system. Could you utilize some of that money? And what I want to caution folks for is that the money doesn't need to be spent by the end of 2022. We have time to figure out how to best use the money, how to help the citizens as best that we can. And, you know, hear what their ideas are, and if there are things that we can use the money for. Can't be municipal operations or things like that. So your hands are tied in certain ways. But Belgrade is a community that relies on our lakes for our economic and, you know, viability. So water quality is utmost, you know, the utmost importance. And there are some programs as far as water quality that some of that money might be able to be utilized for. So, you know, we're looking at what all the options are, and we're gonna take citizen input. What we didn't want to do is take time out of every select board meeting and away from our usual business. So the thought is that we would pull together a public forum, and then folks can come in with their ideas. And everybody gets a set amount of time, much like this. And you can present your ideas, and then we would tier them on a system and decide together as a community and as a town, how to use those funds.
What do you see as the timing for that public forum? Do you have a target date in mind or time range?
Well, we were kind of leaning towards, we wanted to get through town meeting. And then we would start brainstorming on, you know, when, you know, my anticipation is that the town would have one public forum and then a second public forum. So we can make sure that you have all the ideas on the table, but we don't have a set date for it yet.
Well, let me go back to Nicholas. You know, one of the issues that is facing Belgrade and every place else is workforce issues. Turnover is expensive in terms of training people. And yet people are constantly are looking for other opportunities. There's a lot of articles about the great resignation, resignations of 2020 and 2021. So Nicholas, what are your thoughts about things that the town could do to keep the good people that we've got, but also attract people to come in to work for the town?
As far as, thanks for the question, Jay. As far as town employees, I think we could, I think we should do a survey of, of town employees. And then maybe implement a shared work class. So if you're a parent with a young child, let's say there's a 40-hour position, someone could work 20 hours, and then the other person could work 20 hours. That's as far as town employees. I'm not sure what we could do for employees outside of the town of Belgrade. I haven't really given that any thought.
Let me just take a pause here, remind folks that we certainly want to hear your questions. Although we're, we're not activating multiple microphones because that just gets to be a little confusing sometimes. But please, if you're joining us on Zoom, please use the chat function. If you are on Facebook, please feel welcome to post your messages there. And let, let me just check with Brian and Gina to see if there are any questions that have been presented by others.
No, nothing as of now, Jay.
Gina, have you? Oh, yeah, okay, great. Well, continuing on, let's see, that was Nicholas. Melanie, let me, let me bounce back to you. Well, continuing on, um let's see, that was Nicholas. Uh Melanie, let me let me bounce back to you. Um one of the things that has been discussed. For for some time now is the need for a new fire station um to replace the the depot um station. Um it's something that the town's been looking towards for for a long time. What are your thoughts on the level of urgency? Is this a want or a need? Um and where it should be located?
Well, I think for a long time it was a. A need that we identified in the future, um and it was a want. To get us to that need. I think the sense of urgency has gotten a little bit more so um for a couple of reasons. One was the sale of Tukey Mill. And when the mill was sold, there. That fire station is not on is not on land that's owned by the town of Belgrade. What that was is there was a long-term ninety-nine-year lease. And we are not certain at this point. The expectation was that that lease requirement would move forward as the sale went. And it did to the first purchaser, but we're not sure if it went through with the second purchaser. So technically, right now, the town of Belgrade's fire station in North Belgrade could be. On land that at any point in time could be taken back. Then we also don't own the land that the depot station is on. So that is also one of those. So through the generosity of the folks in Belgrade, the stations are where they need to be, which is one centrally located to each of the. The arms of the town. Um but do we need a more centrally located fire station that? We can encompass some of those smaller fire stations? I think we're getting to the point now where it is more of a need. So several years ago, you know, the um. Account was established, a capital reserve towards the possible purchase of land and also for a future fire station. So once again, if you look at your town warrant, you'll notice that there is a line article in that where we are looking to populate that account. For a future fire station. Because it it isn't gonna be something that's three hundred thousand. We're probably going to be several million into that project. So.
Nicholas, what are your thoughts? I didn't realize that the fi- the fire department was squatters on other people's land.
And now you know.
I I've learned something tonight. Nicholas, what are your thoughts about uh the the need for a central fire station and and? What are the things that should be considered in terms of location and function?
After speaking with Anthony. Recently, it has been, it was made aware to me. The 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 current depot fire station needs. Mo- multiple repairs and it can't fit the rescue truck as of right now. So I think it is most, I think it is most important that we build. A fire station that is centrally located. Uh that could get to both arms of the town as quick quickest as possible. And that can fit the equipment that is needed.
Great. Um w- well, let me sort of um continue that theme a little bit, cuz one of the things that happened in town recently was Belgrade and Rome. Um share uh fire and EMS services. It started off with one person and now it's two. Um staying with Nicholas, do you think there are other areas where um Belgrade could work uh and should work collaborative collaboratively? With our neighboring towns, with Kennebec County, with with state agencies and. Uh and if so, what are what are some of the examples that you think we ought to consider?
Currently, the town works with KV CAG for uh which is Kennebec Valley Council of Governments. Uh so, which allows them to buy salt and sand and other products. From. From them. So one other thing I can think of is buying products in bulk. The town usually. But buying products in bulk with RSU eighteen, the town usually. Buy fuel with RSU eighteen, but this past year. There, the town got a better price separately than together through a gas of fuel. So that. I think buying products in bulk with. RSU eighteen and working even more with KV CAG is what. Need to happen.
Thank you. Melanie, same same question for you or are there other areas where you think that we could work collaboratively with our neighbors and?
Well, and I'll piggyback on Nicholas a little bit with the sharing of the bulk purchases. Um one of the things that we do in the town is we don't just check with RSU eighteen. We also work with Main Municipal Association um and. Kennebec Valley Council of Governments. Now, both KV CAG and Main Municipal are organizations that the town pays to participate in. But what that does is it does give you a little bit more buying power when you have. Multiple entities that need a large amount of a product. You can generally get the price at a lower cost. So we have definitely worked to coordinate that and we do try to find the best price for the town of Belgrade in every one of those scenarios. Um in the past, working with RSU eighteen was one of the better deals and other times um we're better off standing on our own. So but we do always look to see if there's a way that we can save the taxpayers a little bit of money with those bulk purchases. I think some of the other things that we could coordinate, a number of years ago, we had first talked about. Um possibly sharing a code enforcement officer. Because one of the things with the lakes is if it happens in Belgrade. It's whatever happens on the shoreline in Belgrade is eventually gonna be going on in Oakland or it's gonna be going on in Smithfield or Mount Vernon. Because our side of the lake isn't impervious to anybody else's. E- every action has a reaction. So if you were to share code enforcement um with some of those neighboring communities. You would know of violations that happen, say, in Smithfield that may potentially affect Belgrade. Or if Belgrade has an incident that may potentially affect Oakland. So if you had a coordinated effort that way. Um what happens now is not every town has noticed that a neighboring town has a violation. So if there was a coordinated effort between code enforcement, that's definitely something that. That could potentially save. Save money for each of the towns, cuz what happens too with things like that is code enforcement and that tends to be a part-time position. And if you were to, and so what happens with a part-time position, if you're splitting a forty-hour work week, is neither end of those twenty hours offers benefits. So if you can work together with another community to pull together a forty-hour position that benefits both towns, then you can also look at splitting. A benefit package, much as we're doing with the town of Rome. Um with the full-time secondary, full-time firefighter. So sharing services, sharing benefits and, you know, providing services that. Benefit all of the area communities as well as saves Belgrade a little bit of money.
We are um actually bumping right up against our our time. It's it's amazing how quickly um forty-five minutes goes. Um but I just, I do wanna give a chance to the candidates to just say uh some final words um if you'd like. And Nicholas, let me start with you.
Okay, uh I just wanted to uh thank everybody for listening. And I uh would appreciate your vote and votes. And if you want to learn more, you can follow me on Facebook at Nicholas Alexander for Selectmen. That's my uh Facebook page for my Selectman race.
Thanks, Nicholas. Melanie?
Sorry, Jay, there was a question in the chat as well.
I I saw that, but we're we're bumped up against time, so um we're gonna have to we're gonna wrap it up prematurely. We'll we'll find a way to answer the questions, but.
All right, so I guess my wrap-up would be, I'm not perfect, but the one thing that I always do is I always vote with my heart for Belgrade. So I would appreciate your support. Um been doing it for twelve years and I'd like to do it for another three.
Thanks, Melanie. I I I will just answer the the question that has to do with um that it almost sounds like the North Belgrade Fire Station would be the only thing absorbed. And my understanding is that it would be a consolidation of the depot and i- if if that was the direction. That it might be a consolidation of a couple of different departments, but I guess that's that's in the to-be-determined um phase in terms of. Are we squatters? Can we stay? But uh we do need, we do need to wrap it up. I apologize for that. I I before we end this segment, I I I wanna extend my thanks to to Nicholas and Melanie. For um your interest in the position, for your willingness to to join us uh this evening, and it's been very helpful. I'll turn it over to you, Gina, and then we will move into the next section.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay and Melanie and Nicholas. That was really uh a lot of information. We got to know you better. So really appreciate your coming out for the forum. Um so now, I think unless you need a break, Jay, we're gonna move right into the uh school board.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay, the only thing I might mention, Jay, since we have five candidates, we might need to keep an eye on. How long candidates have for answering, and if they go too long, I will flash this.
Excellent. Let that sounds great. Let's um, let's bring back uh Sharon. Give us just a second here to work through the technology. Folks would. Activate your cameras. There. Who are we missing? Uh Dr. Smith. There we go. One, two, three, four, five. We're all here. Excellent. Well, th- thank you all. Uh it's exciting that we have five candidates who are interested in. Uh the 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 position on the on the the school board. So let's just um go around the horn and um I'll I'll start in no particular order other than this is where I wrote him down. Stacy, tell us a little bit about yourself. Take a couple minutes to let us know who you are, um why you're interested in in joining the school board and. Um and the floor is yours.
I I first have to start off um introducing myself because I I'm new to Belgrade. My family and I relocated here from Massachusetts in May. Um and, you know, a- at the time we decided to relocate. My boys, I have a a nine-year-old and a fourteen-year-old. They were home. Um a hundred percent remote in Massachusetts doing schoolwork. And um, you know, that that wasn't working. They were they were failing academically and and socially. So my husband, um he was offered a a position in in Portland. You know, for work and, you know, we we could have moved anywhere, um to be honest with you, but we we decided to.
And.
Whoops.
Looks like we lost Stacy. Well, I'm sure she'll be back. So Sharon, let me go to you and then we'll 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 talk with you while while Stacy's getting reconnected.
Okay. Hi, um uh my name is Sharon Frost. And we moved here, my family moved here in two thousand and eleven, came from Reed Field. Uh my husband is a physician at the hospital and we have three daughters. Two are now in college and our youngest is a sophomore at the high school, Mesulinski High School. I, my background is is in education. I have a master's in teaching English as a second language. And um so I've worked in, I'm certified K to twelve and I've worked in schools. Um several different types of schools. But um since, since we had children, because David's hours were so long, I have been a stay-at-home mom. Um and volunteered in the schools and served on um various boards. But now with my older two at college and, you know, having a sophomore. It's freed up time for me to be able to. Partake in other activities and since I, you know, I have a very vested interest in the school system. Um I decided to to run, so there you go.
Thanks, Sharon. Stacy, welcome back. Let's see if you can, uh you need to unmute yourself. There we go.
Yeah, I I I'm so sorry. I I don't know what happened. I was dropped in mid-conversation.
We're glad you're here. Please continue, um St- Stacy.
Uh so anyhow, um you know, we were, we wound up in Belgrade. And the re- the reason we did so is because RSU eighteen was open for business. My my boys, I I have a a nine-year-old and a fourteen-year-old that are in the school system. Um and they, in Massachusetts, they were a hundred percent remote. Um school-wise, we decided, you know, that wasn't gonna work for us. School is important to us and we needed to relocate. My husband was offered a position in Portland and. We found a spot in Belgrade. RSU was open and we jumped on it. School is important. I feel like. As of lately, school is not seeming very important. Uh we are.
Since I think we're. I don't hear you. I see you, but I don't hear you anymore.
Sorry, I, can you hear me now?
Got you now, yep.
Okay, all right. I'm so sorry. My my phone hasn't done this. I I'm getting phone calls. I apologize. Um but anyhow, I have, we have a vested interest because we have school-aged children that are in school and. I'd like to ski see school, you know. Do well, see my kids do well.
Thank you. And thanks. Thanks for hanging in there through the through the technology.
I I apologize.
Oh, the the no apologies. I think I think one of the things that we've all learned over the last couple of years is that stuff like that happens. Kids and dogs and cats and all kinds of things make cameo appearances and and you know what? It's just fine. So no, no worries at all. Um Penny, um let me go over to you. Um tell us about yourself and why you're interested in the school board.
Can you hear me?
I got you.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank Gina and the Communications Committee for doing this forum and for you, Jay, to do the MC. For experiences, I'm currently State Director for Concerned Women for America of Maine. Um my experiences, ideas and skills, run the gamut. Of speaking publicly, lobbying the legislature and Congress, working with coalitions to advance public policy. And extensive research work on issues important to students' well-being and other topics. My motivation over the years. I've been hearing the call to run for school board and that parents have been awakened to what kids are being taught in schools because COVID has caused them to be homeschooled. And because some of the protocols for COVID are unproven, I know a lot. Um parents are unhappy that their kids are still masked. And so I'd I'd like to work with the the school to see what we can do about that. But um I'm pleased with our school department. Um we have a wonderful school in RSU eighteen. And I wanna work with the school board to continue doing so well and um. Yeah.
Thank you. We'll come, we'll come back to, I wanna I wanna follow up on a couple of those points, but let's continue with the the introductions and Dr. Smith.
Thank you, Jay. Uh my name is Jim Smith, born of James and Kathleen from Chapley, Maine. My dad was a retired lineman and my mom was a legal secretary. And my wife and I uh have lived in Belgrade nearly for a decade with four children who've grown up in the community here. Um in Belgrade. I have a brother who's a professional musician who lived in Belgrade for many years and lives in Florida now, but frequents Belgrade. Quite often and summers here. My parents valued public education and the importance of it to the community. I've been fortunate uh being a first year, a first. I've been fortunate uh being a first year, a first generation uh college graduate, became a doctor of law and policy at Northeastern University and uh teach seventh grade at Coney uh Coney Middle School. Uh I've been a public educator for nearly uh nearly fifteen years and have worked in places like Long Creek Youth Development Center. Um I worked at a sixth grade, I had a one year contract as a sixth grade social studies teacher in uh at Meselansky Middle School and now I'm at Coney. So the motivation that leads me to uh become a member of the school board is twofold. Public education has allowed me an opportunity to have an education uh because of the benefits that it offers. Um I wouldn't have been able to do it on my own. RSU eighteen included. Um they helped further my education. Now that my education is complete with a master's degree in education and my terminal degree. My intentions really are to return this back to the community and uh kind of pay it forward and have the uh town of Belgrade um and other towns RSU eighteen uh benefit from the things that they gave me. Second, due to the pandemic, uh many districts and schools are finding that graduations are decreasing as much as ten percent. As a member of the school board, my mission will be to support, of course, the vision and the mission of this district, entrust the roles of the administration and give appropriate recommendations. I trust that the administration will give appropriate recommendations and improve the district's positive graduation rate uh through the impacts of the pandemic, through alternative programming, technology and innovation. Uh with that, I thank you very much Jay and I I look for, look for all of your support.
Thank you. Thank you Jim. And Brian.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to to just partake in this exciting, I think, adventure here. Um once again, my name is Brian Wedge. I live in, I've lived in Belgrade for four years at this point and so relative newcomer to the community. Um I'd like to get in some detail about myself. I have three children in the school system, Finley. He was my artist and athlete. He's my youngest daughter and attends Belgrade Central as a fifth grader. Seth, who's working on his uh almost working on his Eagle Scout and Meselansky football player is a seventh grader at the middle school. And Ava, who's an aspiring doctor and athlete, is a sophomore at Meselansky High School. My wife is a junior high school teacher in RC twelve and currently working on her PhD in literacy at the University of Maine in Orno. A little bit about my background and some of the things that shaped me. I retired from the Army Reserve after uh serving for twenty one and a half years. I served as a non-commissioned officer in Iraq in two thousand three and I finished my soldiering career as a senior instructor and first sergeant of a training unit in Southern Maine. I helped teach thousands of West Point cadets over the course of fourteen summers. I taught and lived in Palermo for seven years and during that time I worked closely with the community to begin the development of an outdoor of of outdoor classrooms, school gardens and trail systems. And during that time, I taught swim lessons for s- for children in several surrounding towns in Sheepscot Lake. I was a substitute bus driver while teaching in the classroom and I still hold my school bus endorsement. I'm also an assistant scout master for Troop four seventy nine in China. So that, and this is my sixth year as a principal at Benton Elementary and my eighth year as an administrator in MS eighty forty nine. Over the past eight years, I've worked collaboratively with the Lawrence School Community and School Board to meet the needs of my elementary students with a focus on helping students develop future aspirations. Belgrade provides the perfect setting for my family and the activities that we we enjoy. I'm a beekeeper. I have hives in Belgrade and Benton. I love fishing, hiking, biking, maple syrup production with my children and gardening. Um recently, I've hiked the Seven Lakes Alliance Trails with my children or I'm working on on doing all the trails. So I make a point of making these activities an important part of my children's childhood. I'm confident that most of our Belgrade families share these values. We have a beautiful community and as a school leader and hopeful school board member, I'll do everything I can to support students, their families and the staff that make our schools do what they do so well, which is nurture and teach children so that they can make the world a better place. Thank you.
Well, um thank you Brian. I I appreciate all of those introductions. Uh very interesting um to hear your your backgrounds and and your interest in um to see those of you who are new to our community and ready to to jump into a new role. So let me work backwards, Brian, sticking with you for for the next question. If if you're successful in being elected as a as a school board member, what changes, if any, would you like to see in the school district?
Yeah, I guess first is I absolutely don't have an axe to grind. I greatly appreciate the work of our teachers, the support staff, our bus drivers and administrators um and all the work they do in RSU eighteen. I've been blown away and impressed. Um and my children have been in a great setting for um during this, particularly during this time. Um I'm proud to be a Meselansky Eagle. A passion of mine is helping students build aspirations and help them imagine the possibilities. And um for me, I would support initiatives that help students develop uh high expectations of themselves. Uh we need to support all of our co-curricular and extracurricular programs and make sure our programs continue to be robust even with the financial restraints that that we're bound to experience as we rebound from the pandemic. And secondly, we need to continue to invest in strong individualized professional development for all of our s- uh district staff. Um that's to me is gonna be a critical area. Staffing across the board is difficult across the nation, the state and and our school districts are are hurting. Um and we need to provide that individualized professional development. Um because the difficulties they face are are truly daunting and we need to show them that we have their back.
Thank you. Jim. What changes would you like to bring? Would you like to see in the school district? Um do I have to? Have to unmute you?
There we are.
There we go. It's a team. We'll get through this.
I don't know if I I have any uh particular changes um that I'm looking to to endorse or or push through or or um feel that are necessary. Quite familiar as um as a faculty of, at one point at Meselansky, how hard the teachers work, uh how hard the support staff works. And it seems as our our administration really, really does a nice job in supporting them. Um our athletic and co-curricular programs seem to be uh seem to be strong. And what I would like to see is not necessarily a change, but maybe see change in the in the horizon and see how um see how kids are impacted uh before they are impacted uh and possibly be able to change as we have a pandemic or had a pandemic or moving through the pandemic. I feel it's important for the school board and for a school board member, not only to be caught into today and our situations today, but also be cognizant of how we're gonna end up developing and changing as our world changes, as things are different and as education has uh changed. And we can see that through higher education specifically. Uh I believe our um secondary education and primary education is gonna make similar changes. So with that, seeing things from the front um and seeing ahead of the curve is what I'd like to see uh happen within the school board. Thank you for the good question.
Hey, I'll move over to you. I'm gonna come back and I want, I wanna have a focused um period to talk about COVID uh response, but uh other than that, are there other questions? Are there other issues that you would like to see um changes changed within the district?
If I understand the question correctly, you wanna know if there are other changes besides COVID?
Well, only that, only that, I I I do wanna come back to COVID as a focus topic, but at this point, I just wanted to sort of get a general idea if there were um if you're successful in getting on the board, uh what changes, if any, you'd like to see within the district?
Well, my kids graduated um in um ninety-two and ninety-three. My daughter was in every cut sport in high school, played varsity freshman year. And our athletic programs are top of, top notch and we've got great coaches and great people in in those areas and my kids, my daughter especially um benefited from that. And um so I'm thankful and I don't wanna see anything happen to that. But uh and my son also did because he wasn't your typical kid. And uh he didn't like taking home economics. He wanted to work in the shop. And so they accommodated him and he ended up building a cedar strip canoe right out in the hallway. As a fundraiser for his senior trip. So um we do a lot in our school to accommodate children because they're all different and they all have needs uh specific to them. And I think our school does a great job of taking care of that. So I'd like to see that continue. And I'd like to work with those on the school board to uh keep that going as well as the wonderful things that they do do for our kids. We have great teachers and we have great staff and and I'm grateful. But um my kids are grown. I don't have any in in school anymore and even my grandkids are grown. But um education is still very important to me because it's our next generation and to remain free. We need to be helping them compete in the world.
Thanks Penny. Sharon. Changes that you would like to see uh in the district if you're successful?
So I just wanna start by saying how very proud I was um am of our district and how we did continue to send our kids to school every day during the pandemic. Um I I bragged about that to a lot of, a lot of our staters. But um I um we have, again, I'm sure a lot, a lot of it was due to the pandemic, but we have lost some good teachers. And I I guess I would want to sort of get a gauge on um teacher satisfaction at this time because I I really believe that um students learn best from teachers that feel appreciated and happy um in their district. And um I certainly don't wanna lose any more good teachers. Um so that would be one, one focus that I would have. Um the other issue or concern of mine um is just something I learned recently. When uh my daughter was signing up for, or trying to sign up for AP Calculus and um learning that that, you know, there may not be an AP calcu- a calculus course taught because there aren't enough students interested in taking that course. And AP Calc is really a very common AP course. It's not uh, it's not that. It's not one of those courses that you would expect to have to do online, I guess, is the is my concern. So when I spoke to um Mr. McLaughlin, he said that there's um definitely decreased interest in those courses. And so then it it makes me sort of wonder about, are we making academics a priority enough um these days? Not that every child has to do AP or um you know, or should do AP courses, but um you would want, you would hope that kids would strive for um for that, for those, that level of academic, to make them able to be competitive in, you know, for college and in the future workforce. So.
Thanks. Stacy. What what if any changes would you like to see uh in the district?
So first, I I wanna apologize for my introduction. I I I'm using my phone as, you know, for the meeting and I had some anxious callers. But I I'd like to see um some changes. I I I I tried saying before that I have a nine year old and a fourteen year old that are in the school system. And I can't help but to feel that there's a huge disconnect in the school system and family. Um you know, I I I also have a twenty-one year old and when she was a kid, I I spent so much time in her school. And um you know, there was a bond between the school and the family that um you know, I noticed helped her to thrive, you know, parents, knowing parents, teachers knowing the parents, principals knowing the parents. But now I I I just feel like, you know, maybe it's due to COVID, but um doors are closed and parents are kind of left out of the loop. Uh and I I just feel like for, in order for children to thrive and to do well, there has to be a strong bond between school and family. Uh and I would really like to see that come back. I know COVID plays a big role in that. Um but I'm really hoping to see that come back because I think that's huge. It's really huge. Uh I I noticed a confidence in my, I I remember a confidence in my daughter that I don't see in my two boys right now at school. You know, when when schools are in in family are not one, there's no success and that's what we all want for for our children, a success.
Well, COVID has uh certainly uh come up in this meeting as it does um in pretty much every, every discussion that we have. So let's some let's just keep that as our next topic as we, as we continue the discussion. And I'm interested in your view of the current COVID practices at the school district. For the benefit of um those who are are joining us online. The current COVID protocols, protocols follow the main CDC guidelines and include mask wearing is required indoors and on school buses, but not outdoors. Social distance rules are in place to the extent possible. Mask breaks are allowed. All students will be in school. There's no remote learning unless a student is quarantining. If a student is exposed at school, they will if a student is exposed at school, they will not have to quarantine from school. Um and a five day quarantine is required of students who test positive. Not sure I'm clear on on the the fifth one, but with regard to, and I know this is, this is changing and there's a meeting today, I think the US CDC was um having some discussions about masking uh and the the issue of masks and uh COVID is is a hot topic at every school meeting. Um but as we go around for this next question, what is your view of the the current COVID practices uh within RSU eighteen? And um we'll, we'll start with Stacy.
You know, you know, I I think you stumbled a little bit there because they they really don't make, you know, much sense. Um you know, you couldn't, you can go to school if you have COVID and you gotta quarantine while you're home. I I I don't know. Uh nothing makes much sense to me right now. I I I expressed earlier that I I have a nine year old and we're new to the area. Um and you know, what's most important to me is that my kids feel comfortable going to school. And you know, I I worry about my nine year old because he seems to be struggling socially. You know, and every day he comes home from school and I say to him, his name is Dante. He's at the fourth grade um at um Belgrade Central. And I ask him every day, like, how was your day? Are you, are you making friends? Uh you know, how are things going? And you know, I I I keep pressing this question and and one day he actually, he turned to me and he said to me, Mom, you know, how do you expect me to make friends? You know, I I can't even see if they're smiling at me. You know, kids have masks on. I don't even know if they like me. And that, and that, you know, pretty much made me sick to my stomach. Uh you know, it 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 hit me and it, and it, you know, I really, it gets you thinking, you know, especially when you think about kids in first grade. And you know, they're learning to read and the and the teacher has a mask on and uh you know, and and they can't even see, you know, you know, what what a teacher is saying. Um but you know, I I I think we we all need to do a deep dive into how it's affecting our kids with the mask and the whole COVID. I mean, we need to to learn to live beyond COVID and so on our kids and they need to get back to being kids.
Thanks Stacy. Penny, let me jump to you. Same question. Your view of the current COVID practices in the district?
Thank you. Um well, as I said before, um the parents act concerned about masks. I've been to a couple of the school board meetings lately where um there were three people in the audience, parents who specifically addressed the school. There were three people in the audience, parents who specifically addressed the school board about that issue. And I don't know as it's been resolved, but I just got. A mailer from. Maine Policy Council and it kind of shot holes through most of the CDC. What they call science and. You know, masks don't work and social distancing doesn't work and, and on and on it goes and so. I'm sure everybody on this call has heard the left and the right and, and in between and. First masks work, don't work, then they do work, then you got to wear two and around and around it goes, so I. Like me, I've not been vaccinated, but I had COVID and. Protocols say that I have a better immunity than those with the vaccination. And other people are saying, no, 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 you need to get vaccinated, so. I think people are frustrated because we really don't know, we're hearing too many.
Let me just, I, I just want to, I apologize for interrupting you, but what I'm, what I want to do is not get into the, the debate about. Science and CDC and masks and things like this, what I'm really looking for is the, the. Your, your reaction to how the district is processing, because I think one of the things that, that is a challenge is. There's a lot of information that comes up, science does change and, and information comes from a lot of different sources, but. How do you think the district has, has done in its response to COVID?
Well, as I said, the parents who came to the school board meeting. Haven't had any relief, they would like to see the children. Take the masks off, but they were only three parents, so I don't know how other parents feel, but. Watching the kids on TV that they didn't have to wear the mask anymore and they were just little kids. Jumping up and down and shouting hooray, so I agree with Stacy when she says, you know, they can't even see if you smile. It's hard on the kids and if it's not necessary, let's take them off, let's let them be kids, that's what I would recommend.
Thanks. Brian, same question to you, I'm sure you're dealing with this at your school as well.
Yeah, you know, and this has been something that I've been living and breathing since the beginning and is taking a toll on, I think, every. Everybody, obviously, but every, particularly in this case, everyone who's works in a school system, you know, throughout. The country and, and each school, school districts approached it differently because each school district has, is different and, and. But it went in a position of responsibility that includes the health of students and staff. That way is real and it's, it's really hard and. You know, I appreciate what RSU 18 has done, I think the school board and the administration and the staff. And the community has worked really well together to kind of balance. Following the CDC rules and then also, you know, meeting the social emotional needs of our students and. Has been really creative managing resources, so I greatly appreciated that. You know, moving forward, I think, you know, it's a no-brainer, we need to continue to follow the CDC guidelines and keep. Students and staff safety at the forefront of all decisions we make while. While using our heads, you know, and, and managing it very carefully, which, like I said, I believe our district has done.
Thank you. Jim? See, I'm mixing it up, so you never know when I'm going to call on you.
Well, thank you. One, one key idea that I really appreciate and that's something that's important is that, is local control. It's really important that we have local control and with local control, it allowed RSU 18 to make a decision that was out of the box. I can't, I can say that I wasn't really sure that I supported the out-of-the-box perspective that RSU 18 first took. But after it moved forward, I saw that there were some pretty, pretty great benefits. I have personal friends that teach, who I ice fish on these local lakes with and we talk about it all the time and it seems as though the. The, from the teacher perspective, it's been, it's been successful, very impressed by that and I support that. However, I really support research-based ideologies in which. We really need to know that we're doing the right thing for the health and wellbeing. And safety of the staff, of the, especially the kids. And of course, paying direct control of the social emotional wellbeing. As we change, it's very important that we understand what's again, ahead of us. For us to ever return back to what we knew may possibly never happen. So instead of going back to what we knew. We really should take a forward look and integrate these variables we're not used to. And continue to, continue to innovate and take a, a forward approach like RSU 18 did with the COVID-19 pandemic. Thank you.
Thanks. And Sharon?
Yeah, I, I, I agree that, that the district did, did, did well with, to follow CDC guidelines. It, same thing, so important to keep the staff healthy and the students healthy. There, I know there's arguments about the masks and I totally understand where those parents are coming from. For the mental and social aspect, however, there are, there are several numbers of children that are hospitalized with COVID. And, and there's, they can't really, you know, find reasons, you know. For why it's certain kids over others unless there are pre-existing conditions. So I, I, I think that, I, I hope that Omicron is, is a variant that is weaker, so I'm hoping that this pandemic is coming to an end. And I, I support the fact that masks can come off for recess, I know that. I know when my kids were at BCS that the schools were great about getting the kids outside for recess and that's a fine place to take the mask off. And be a child, but when they're in school, I, I do believe that they have to be very safe. And that is why I think that the district has absolutely done the correct thing so far.
Great. Thanks Sharon. Well, another topic that is certainly hot at school board meetings is curriculum. The curriculum as it's developed and, and as it's taught, then Sharon, I'll stay with you for this one. You know, what do you believe is the role of the school board? And what should be the role of the school board in developing curriculum?
I, I really think that, that the teachers and administrators within the school. Have a better finger on the pulse of, of curriculum. I, I guess if, if, if there were, if things got contentious within, within the school system that. The school board would want to oversee. Or be consulted, not oversee, but you know, be consulted. But I, I, I don't necessarily feel it's the school board's job to, to dictate the entire curriculum.
Penny, same question, what do you think is the role of the school board in curriculum development?
Well, curriculum is printed and published by corporations. However, school boards, especially the curriculum committee, must thoroughly review all. To assure well-rounded and appropriate materials are being used to equip students. At their grade level and into the future to be able to compete in today's world when they graduate. No pornography and health education, oppose the 1619 project and promote the 1620 project. Teach love of country. Teach American history truthfully. We need to make sure we're covering the fundamentals, reading, writing and arithmetic. And that includes history and I know we're coming back to home economics and, and. Shop and the arts, we've done really well with the arts in RSU 18 and, and. I think that should continue, but I absolutely think it's a responsibility of the school board to. Make sure that, that the curriculum we're using is appropriate and, and up to date for our kids.
Thank you. Stacy, your thoughts on the role of the school board in curriculum development?
So you know, I have to agree with Penny, I, I think the school board. Should be very involved in, you know, in the curriculum. You know, life is about choices, you know, I, I can go out today and I can buy a car, I, I have a choice between. An SUV, a truck or, or an electric car. But when it comes to school, it's a one-size-fits-all approach. You know, we have, we have kids that, you know, you think outside the box, you know, they're, they're hyperactive, they, they bounce around. They have imaginations and I feel like. That goes unappreciated, you know, kids, kids, kids are all different. School, school should have choices, just as life has choices. And I feel as, as we evolve as a country and the school system that we should evolve. You know, in the decisions we make within the school system. You know, it's ever-changing and you know, we need to keep updated, I feel like. Things may be a little bit outdated and we need to, we need to get up on that, keep things updated.
Thanks Brian. Same question, the role of the school board in curriculum development?
So ultimately, the school board is responsible for the district curriculum. And ensuring that it aligns with the main learning results and reflects, you know, the values of our communities. But I'm not so concerned with the board developing the curriculum, you know, that's why we, we hire, you know, the superintendent and, and the experts in the field. But I am interested in finding ways to support ongoing professional development for those people, for all of the staff, including support staff. You know, when I think of curriculum, there's a lot of definitions for, but ultimately, for me as a parent, it's what my children experience going through the school system. You know, and, and kind of where it brings them at, at the end of their senior year. So how can we better support teachers and support staff, our teachers and support staff must have the tools to connect, support. And teach all of the students in our district. This is very challenging and complicated because each student has diverse needs. And I always go back to my time in the military as a first sergeant, you know, the, the first sergeant in the army's job ultimately is take care of his soldiers. So that they can do their job, so let's take care of our staff so they can take care of our students and, and meet their needs.
Thank you, I want, I want to follow up on, on that, but let me ask Jim about your, your thoughts on the role of. The school board and curriculum development?
Yeah, thank you, it's definitely, the school board has a, has an obligation to make sure that. And the financial decision part of any kind of curriculum is, is reviewed. But I, I, I agree with Brian in the fact that RSU 18 hires experts in which. They understand and have the pulse of the curriculum and, and taking the administrator's recommendations on. The changing methods. In which they're experiencing, diversifying the curriculum to include. Multiple tiers and levels to be able to teach all children. From those with special needs to the ones that excel and end up heading to college. But the experts are the teachers and the teachers know what the kids needs. Need and the, and the administrators know what the teachers need and developing that. Is really the role of, I feel is, is my role is to support the recommendations through, again, research. Seeing research of a curriculum of, of US history that is successful and a tiered success. With, with quantitative data is, is very important, so I, I feel that the role of the school board is to. Take on those recommendations, review those recommendations, communicate with each other as members and. And approve those recommendations if it makes sense for the school or not, thank you very much.
Thank you, we're, we're bumping up on, against the, the end of our time, but I do want to put a question that came to us. From Facebook and it says, there are many impacts due to the pandemic. What significance does staff and student mental health play? And how do you propose the school support the mental health of all those affected, inclusive of the community and stakeholders within the school? And Brian, let me start with you, since you sort of, you touched upon this a couple of times in your comments.
That's an incredible question. I spend most of my days trying to figure that out and it's, it's very challenging when you're trying. You know. To support students and staff and their families and where you think of a public school as, as we, we. We provide so many things for people and. And there isn't, I guess I, what I would say is not a simple answer, but I think ultimately it's listening. Listening to what staff are saying, you know, what are their needs, if what they need is time. We creatively find ways to create time if it's resources. So a lot of it is listening and, and understanding that, you know, they're human beings. You know, they're coming from a difficult point of managing their household during a pandemic. And they're coming to work and they're, they're taking on their shoulders the needs of 20 students. And also bearing the burden often of their colleagues. And I, and I, the last thing I just want to add to is, we think often of just teachers and I'd say I spend a significant time supporting teachers, but we have a, a fleet of. Educational technicians that are experts in their field. That are working intimately with their students and this also goes to all of our cafeteria workers and bus drivers and. And how can we support their needs and I think we just, we need to stop and ask what their needs are. And then we need to come up with a plan to support them, it needs to be intentional.
Thank you. Stacy, let me go up to you and your, your thoughts on. The role of, in, in supporting the mental health of those that have been affected?
It's a huge question, but you know, I have to go back to what I had originally said that. You know, the, the bond between school and family is, is so important, you know. Everybody needs to hear each other and, you know, there has to be discussion, there has to be. You know, better relationships, you know, communication is huge. You know, gee, you, you know, you could go down the rabbit hole and, and get into a million things, but you know. You know, we don't have time for that, but you know, the, the kids are important, they're, they're struggling, this is a tough time and. You know, bringing together family and school is huge and, and listening to each other and. Instead of, you know, being divided is, is so important. And just, just being united is. Is, is the solution I see and, and, and listening.
Thank you Sharon.
Sorry, yeah, I, I think listening is also the key here. And, and you know, I have heard of some schools who have pulled in a school psychologist. You know, for like one morning a week just to be there for students and, and or staff. I don't know, I don't know if that, you know, how successful each school has been with that, but. The important thing, the, I, I think the important thing is. And again, I, I'm thinking of the students, but I think the teachers. Know the students best, they have the students every day in their classroom and. And it's hard, it's hard for a parent to know what's going on at school with their students, so. I guess I would, you know, just support the teachers in, in listening to their feedback. And, and getting that information to people who can help.
Thank you. Penny?
Thank you. Yes, I think it's important to hear all sides of an issue. Find ways to hear all the arguments, pros, cons. And seek the welfare of the student, it's all about the students, it's not about us, it's not about. The teachers or the administrators having our way. Uh, the teachers or the administrators having our way. It's what's best for the students and we know that our students are suffering right now, um, with mental health. Uh, not, I'm not so sure of our school, but I'm, I'm talking on a broad sense statewide and, and nationwide. Um, we're hearing of a lot of difficulty. And so, um, we need to be assured that and reassure each other that we're doing the very best we can. And you know, give a child aspirations and they will reach for it. Um, I think it was Stacy that said communication is, is key. And, um, communication with the students from the parents and from the teachers and the teachers with the parents. And administrators, um, I will say Kyle Gottlieb, we're very fortunate to have as our superintendent. And, um, I've never had a time when he wouldn't take time. So all those things are important to hear what we're struggling with. And making sure that whatever we're doing is the very best for our students.
Thanks, Penny and Jim.
Well, uh, I found from personal experience, having worked through the pandemic. Um, having been in the trenches during the middle of it, having been quasi-laid off, if you will. Putting out materials to be able to benefit kids, I've found through personal experiences, students are extremely resilient. That students seem to be able to, I've found students are coping with this situation much better than most think. So one thing that would be important for me in this situation with mental health. Is that we would design, and this would be something that would probably be on, was something I would adopt on my plate. A study that would find out what the problem is. As we go through, we really don't know what the problem is. I can assume that students are resilient. I can say that teachers, from my experience, teachers struggled more last year in the district I worked in than kids did. So with that being said, with, one example is that, uh, the world felt that we didn't have internet. So how can we go remote? Studies show that that wasn't true, that a majority of kids, and I think it was five percent or less of the state. They all had internet, five percent or less needed furnished internet through, uh, through programs. Studies showed this and then it isolated the problem. So I feel in order to find out and fix social emotional challenges, we really need to find the problem. Once we find the problem, we can then address and look at ways to be able to, um, to be able to meet the needs of the problem. Thank you very much, Jay.
Thank you very much. These are, this is a great discussion. I, I feel badly that, um, we're, we're right up, we're actually beyond the time that, that we set up. So thank you for that because, um, with so many people and so many, uh, good ideas, it's, it's really helpful to have the time to hear from you. But I do want to, um, sort of wrap it up and give you all just a, a minute to, to any closing thoughts that you'd like to. Um, to offer up there and let me start with Brian.
Thank you. Um, you know, my goal has always been simple, but not straightforward. And it's to meet the needs of all students. So whether a first sergeant, a parent, a teacher, an assistant scout master, principal. My strongest desire has always been to nurture and to teach. And as a school board member, I would help meet the needs of all the students, um. By first ensuring student and staff are safe and not only are they safe, but do they feel safe and supported? Supporting, um, support providing district staff with ongoing and meaningful professional development. To help them better meet the needs of all of our students. And nurturing a collaborative and inclusive school community that works together to meet the goals of all stakeholders. I'd greatly appreciate, um, the support and, and, and the votes to, to be on the school board. Um, I'd love to talk to people individually if they have any questions about my points of view. Um, but please visit, like and share. I do have a Facebook page as wedge for Belgrade School Board. I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Uh, Jim?
So refreshing to have so many great candidates regardless of who, who ends up being voted. I feel really confident that RSU eighteen is just gonna end up being a better place. Um, being a forward thinker, seeing things outside the box and seeing what's coming is important to me. And it's something that I would look at for, uh, RSU eighteen. Taking a look at what innovative schools are doing and, um, if it fits what RSU eighteen is, consider it. With that, in addition, um, finding out what the needs are of teachers. What the needs are of students and through that, um, do it through research, a lot like the town did with our speed sign. Um, the research showed that, well, it's, it's not the times that we might think that there was speeding. With that, we might find gaps in what, what is, we really need to pay attention to. I look forward to being a part of that and I sure hope that, um, through research-based decisions. Um, we can do that on the school board. I appreciate your support and feel free to reach out to me, um, for any questions. Thank you for your support.
Thanks very much. Penny?
Thank you again, Gina and the members of the communications committee for holding this candidate forum so we can get our message out. And voters can make an informed vote at the polls. We are blessed to have the Zoom technology enabled to communicate even when we try to stop the spread of a virus. I thank the other candidates for stepping up. To the call to serve our constituents at the local level and I look forward to your vote on the March, at the March Town Meeting. Um, I'm Penny Morrell. I'm your friend and neighbor in beautiful Belgrade. Um, I've been, I've lived here for over sixty years. I'm not going to tell you how many more. And if you want to support me, um, make a sign and stick it up on your lawn. I would be blessed if I rode around this town and saw Penny Morrell for school board on, on your lawn. Thank you, Jay and, and all of you. It's been fun.
I'm gonna put up a sign that says Penny Morrell, tell us how old you are. No, no, no. Um, Sharon?
Well, thank you very much, Jay, and thanks to everybody. I too feel confident that there, you know, that there are very good, excellent candidates in this whole group. Um, that'll do great things for, for our school system. Um, I, I think that we have a, a, a really exciting couple of years on the horizon. I do believe that this pandemic is coming to an end and there's a lot of work to be done to make up for lost time. Um, I, I guess I, I really hope that we can find ways through fundraising or what have you. To, to bring more to our schools, um, and to, you know, give our, give our students more opportunities. Um, technology, um, is huge and, um, that's a perfect example of where we could really fly. You know, spread our wings and fly. Um, you know, like, like we've mentioned, I think we do well with sports and arts. And I want to absolutely continue all of that. But I, I, um, I want the best for all our students and I, I too realize that, you know, students learn in different ways. And we need to meet the needs of everyone and, um, we can do it. We can do it if, um, we create an environment. At the school where, um, teachers and staff feel appreciated. And, um, it will be reflected in how our students perform. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. And Stacy?
Well, thank you, everyone, and it was nice to see everyone tonight. And, um, I, I'd like to say that I am in, you know, I'm no politician. I'm, I'm not even good at speaking out loud, um, but I, I am a mom. Um, I, I have skin in the game. I have two boys, nine and fourteen. Uh, they, they have, you know, some years to go in the school system and so do I. Uh, I don't only feel that my kids are important, but I feel like everybody else's are too. I feel like we need to get back to feeling as though our kids are important, uh, their futures are important. Um, you know, we gotta get back to, you know, getting back into the swing of things and creating relationships. And, you know, just doing what's best for our kids. I, I, I'm new to the town. I, I know nobody in town, um, but your vote will mean a lot to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Well, you know us now, so we.
Yeah, I made some friends.
So, um, before I, before I turn it over to Gina, I just, I, I want to offer, offer my thanks. I've, I've lived in this town for a long time. I've had four kids that have gone through the school system, received an excellent education. Uh, a wife that worked as a middle school educator for forty years, I believe. And I wish I had the time to, uh, ask Brian to compare and contrast working in a war theater with teaching middle school. But that's a, a subject for probably a different day. But I, I really do appreciate whether for the military service, for the, for, as educators, as community members. Thank you so much for not only your time tonight, but your willingness to, to be involved in our community. It's, it's folks like you that really do make the system, just the wonderful system that it is. And, and thank you for that. Gina, you gonna talk about the voting opportunities for, for sure? Okay, then I will stop talking and, and turn it over to Gina. Thank you so much.
Okay. Well, thanks to all of you for participating in this forum and all the information and ideas that you shared. It really has given, um, all of us and the fifteen people that have tuned in or more, um, to this forum. A better chance to get to know you and we are going to be broadcasting, or we are going to be posting the recording later. On, um, the town's Facebook page and the town's YouTube channel. So tell people you know that that's a good place to hear more from you. Um, I also want to say how much we appreciate your service to the town, both by serving on committees and boards. And by running for the office of select board and school board. I know public service takes a lot of time and energy and we want you to know that your commitment to the town is valued. This energy enthusiasm you bring to the town helps make our town Belgrade a really good place to live. Thanks to Jay for moderating and Brian Bopain for helping us run the forum on Zoom and Facebook. Um, don't forget to vote. Absentee ballots are now available. You can get one either by visiting or calling the town office. And you can drop it in the secure drop box beside the town office or you can mail it. Um, you can also bring it in and hand it to one of the clerks. There will be no, uh, in-person town meeting this year. Um, the select board decided because of COVID to hold town meeting by secret ballot again this year. So you can also vote, um, by secret ballot on March nineteenth. That's a Saturday at the Center for All Seasons. Polls will be open from eight AM to eight PM. And you can register to vote that day and you can also register before then at the town office. So once again, thanks so much for all of your participation. And, um, it really helps, uh, us to make our decisions for candidates. So we appreciate you doing this, taking the time. Thanks and have a good evening.